Okay, good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order of the Arundel Select Board for Monday, May 22. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. Do we have any additions?
Yeah, I have a little report from the RSU Finance Committee.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Looking for a motion to approve as amended? Motion by Jason, seconded by Phil. All those in favor? Next item on the agenda is public forum. Anybody from the public would like to make any comments on non-agenda items? Tom is coming. All right, hearing none. Anything from the board for non-agenda items? Okay. Approval of minutes, May 8, 2023? And was everybody there for both of these? And May 16? No, we're gonna, we'll take them separately. May 8, 2023. Okay, motion by Velma to approve May 8 minutes. Seconded by Phil. All those in favor? Motion carries. May 16. Motion by Tom, seconded by Phil. Any other discussion? All those in favor? And Jason and Velma abstained because they weren't there, right? With that meeting just for you, everybody. Committee and board reports. Velma?
Yes, RSU is beginning on Tuesday, May 11. And it looks as though all of their numbers are looking good for the end of the year. They have, I'm trying to turn that on.
They have $80,000 left in the athletic complex contingency, and they're leaving it there in the account for replacing the field only. And that looks as though they're going to have around a 1.6 million surplus at the end of the year, and the board did figure that they'd probably have about 1.5 anyway. Seven banks responded to their RFP. Camden National, Kennebunk Savings, Northeast, Andrew Skoggin, Bangor Savings, Partners Bank, and TD Bank. And of those, they picked three finalists: Camden National, Kennebunk Savings, and Northeast. And they did interviews with them one morning last week, and they're going to be discussing them to decide which bank they're gonna go with. And we had the Regional School Unit Number 21 Regular Budget Meeting. It was such an exciting meeting. There were, let's see, 46 people present. And every article passed except Article 14, which was your written ballot. It was 41 to 5. So that was it for the... I don't know why they have those, but that was it for that.
Anybody got any questions for Velma? Okay, thank you, Velma. Managers' report.
Nothing.
Yeah, I have nothing at this point. I've been working on the warrant and the TIF amendment, so we'll talk a little bit about that when we get to that. But the only thing, and I think I gave you an email relative to it, was the crosswalk on Route 1 between Bentley's and the food courts. There's still a requirement by the state to place an ADA pedestrian pad on either side. These pads are sensitive. They have dipples on them, and when ADA folks or people that are have some sort of physical disability can sense it's there, so they know they're in the right location before they hit the button to walk across. So those have not been placed yet. We're probably looking at another $500 to place these mats. And the reason I'm hesitant is that the owner of the property is tentatively coming to the board, the planning board, to make an additional expansion of the food court. And if so, I expressed at the meeting last week my reluctance to continue to have, and that's only my own personal preference, my reluctance to have an entrance off of Route 1. Perhaps maybe we could make an entrance at maybe their business and then have a a side entrance into the food courts as opposed to having the crosswalks there. They're still pondering whether or not they're going to do an expansion. They've cut a lot of timber down there, but have not decided if they're going to do the expansion quite yet. There's engineering involved perhaps, and maybe some material hauled in to make that expansion. So I think they're still pondering that. They also had some issues with illegal signs that were placed on the food trucks, which they have been told about. So even though they're nice signs, they don't meet the requirements of the ordinance. There was a little frustration there, and we encouraged them that if they felt that the sign ordinance was restrictive, that they could come to the board, express their views, and Select Board, and then perhaps go to the planning board to seek an amendment to the ordinance to allow some of these other decorative signs that they would like to have installed. So we gave them the process. Hopefully, they'll adhere to it. But that was the only thing that was sort of outside what we've been working on to took some of my time today, last week.
So if they do expand, is it the intent to eliminate the crosswalk altogether?
Well, that's mine.
All the folks from the Bentley's that would want to cross over?
Yeah, I I think the issue I have, if that was a town road, I wouldn't be as as my thought wouldn't be what it is now. But when you have the state involved, the requirements, their their issues to me that we're extending the town's liability as a result of having these crosswalks there. And if you don't put them into their standards, you're having exposure there. I just want to limitate the town's exposure if possible. I know the intent of the Select Board was to was to have the crosswalks there to enhance a safe environment going across the road. But I gotta tell you, I don't think many people are crossing the road at all at this point. And it's the only crosswalk. You don't have them at the antique spot. You don't have them at Champions going across from one business to the other. You don't have them at the Jay Brothers. So, I mean, I don't know, it's that would be my own thoughts. I express them. They don't mean anything, obviously. It comes up to the planning board and the Select Board and what you folks want to have happen there. But that was only my thoughts. And I usually don't do that very often, but I felt compelled to do it on that one.
I just want to make sure that we're not liable of something. I mean, granted, most people drive in and out, but there still are some people that do, you know, cut across.
Well, we're following the plan with one exception, and that's the ADA pads that need to be put down. So if I don't have anything from there, and I would go the adhesive route. I mean, they have, and I'm sure Phil's familiar with these things, is you put these crosswalks in, they have a a metal pad that can be set in concrete to designate those locations. My thought would be to they do have an alternative to that, which is an adhesive that goes down on top of pavement. So my thought would be to do the adhesive in the pavement as opposed to setting concrete and setting them down, because I still look at that as a, not a temporary, but a seasonal cross. And in the wintertime, we'll do everything we can to cover those, because there's no activity there. We'll discourage folks from crossing the road there at that point. So but that's where I am on that. And, you know, by the end of the day, just to let you folks know, with the setting of the lights, the signs, the crosswalk being installed, the ramps that have been put on either side, and now the pads, probably looking close to over $8,000 that will be spent on that crosswalk to get it done.
What has the applicant spent?
Well, and again, they spent what we required them to spend, and that was to purchase the lights. So, and again, it was more of a gentleman's agreement. I wish I'd put something in writing and that we had been a little more detailed in what that crosswalk had to consist of, and then provided that to them. But at the end of the day, it's pretty well done, except for the pads.
All right, so next item is business.
Yes, if I may, we're gonna talk about the TIF amendment for a public hearing. And I'm gonna be providing you some additional information. It recently came in this afternoon at 4:30. As per your discussion on May 16, the attorneys then amended the TIF agreement again to remove those areas that we had discussed at the May 16 meeting, and that was to remove the approved project costs related to the sanitary sewer construction on Route 1, the construction of the Route 1 sidewalk, the revolving business loan and/or grant program, and the economic development marketing program were the things that we had recognized there. So I have a new public hearing notice that would go out as a result of that. I'll send it down so you all have a copy of it. And if we do get approval tonight, that public hearing would be held at your next business meeting, which would be June 12.
12, yep.
And take one of those and send it on down. Once you review that, if I can get, obviously, a motion in a second to approve that public hearing. So we appreciate it.
Okay, looking for a motion for that? Motion by Jason to have the TIF public hearing on June 12, 2023, seconded by Velma. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
The next piece to that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, obviously, you got the whole warrant, and I've provided explanations to you, but again, Exhibit C, which includes the First Amendment to the Arundel cottages, which would be an attachment to the warrant, has been modified as well. I'll send down the copies now, so you can have them. So the attachment C or Exhibit Cs that I've provided to you are no longer the correct ones. Exhibit C now provides a notice under Table 1. Well, there's a couple of things under the under Table 1, you have a note on the status of the removal of the sanitary construction, the sidewalks, the business loan, the marketing program. What remained was the municipal staff time and the administrative professional services. And in addition to that, we added the public safety building and public safety equipment infrastructure as well as the municipal equipment costs associated with the district development, which covers the ambulance purchase that we'd like. That's under Table Table B. It's on page 3. And then on page 4, includes the stormwater and drainage improvements, recreational trails with significant economic development, promote economic development, and any environmental improvement projects related to the Kennebunk River. So those are all added as part of the change in the amendment to the TIF.
$50,000 doesn't seem like enough money for that environmental improvement.
Well, again, these are just projections. It could be more once you get which going, but we have to be mindful of the money that we do have coming in. And again, we'll probably prioritize where we're gonna spend it initially.
So if obviously, when we get rid of this, spend any of this, we gotta go back to Town Hall. But if would we be okay if we had extra money? And that environmental improvement project is 70 grand. We don't have to resubmit this, right?
No.
Okay, we just gotta get approval from the town to use.
Well, I don't think necessarily you have to seek any further approval. I think you have it with the TIF.
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked about we would do it anyways, just
That's fine.
Just to be transparent.
Yep, I totally get it. And it's not like it takes us long to conduct a special town meeting here in town. You know, we can have a warrant developed and posted within the week's timeframe as required by the statute.
Okay, any comments from any of the boards on the warrant?
So this Exhibit C will be attached as part of the warrant. And the other thing was the the other two articles that we also had for amendments. One was the accessory dwelling unit amendment. And that would be Exhibit A, and Exhibit B would be the the change in the DB 1 and DB 2 in front of certain locations on the Route 1 corridor, and that's why I have the large map up there for you. I guess that came in as a request by a developer who owns property there and provided all the necessary documents to seek that amendment to the ordinance.
Anybody got any comments?
Yeah, I just want, Keith, are you aware, I mean, I love the feedback from the public, but every single one of these letters are exactly the same. They're signed off by different people.
Which letters are you talking, oh?
The ones addressed to Rachel Bull.
Yeah, I think it was a standard letter that was provided. Yeah, that was reviewed by the planning board.
Yeah, these are all butters of that property, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, they're all butters to the, like, I know Marty's in a butter. So they're all butters to to that expansion.
Right. Right, yeah, Mario.
I have a question about the
Mike?
I'm sorry about that. Can't see it behind my iPad. I had a question about the, is it Exhibit A? That's the the one on the
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling unit. I was reading it today, and it talks in there about the fact that yes, your accessory dwelling unit can be separate from your regular dwelling unit. Your primary owner has to live in the regular dwelling unit, and they have to sign a paper stating that they will not divide that land with the dwelling unit. Well, if somebody has enough property, why can't they divide it?
I think it references split, like, if the accessory dwelling is a detached dwelling,
Yep.
you can't split it off from the primary dwelling.
Okay, all right. Because I thought if you had that on, you had four acres, and you were just putting that on two acres, why couldn't you split the other two acres off and, you know, build another house and another accessory dwelling unit? You just can't take the dwelling unit, the accessory dwelling unit, and make it a separate lot.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And I'm not sure why, to me, that doesn't, if somebody wants to split their land, then they can meet all the requirements.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Okay, any other comments? All right, so looking for a motion to accept the warrant as presented to us? We got a motion by Jason, seconded by Phil, to accept the town meeting warrant as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I'll send down the original I have. I appreciate your signatures on it. I got it.
Just have your name typed in there.
Too much paper here. All right, next item is a review of the Select Board of Conduct.
Yeah, what I did, Mr. Chairman, is I didn't change any of the language. The only thing I changed was any place within the the adopted code of conduct, I changed from selectmen to select board. And I don't know what else you would like to do with the code of conduct.
All right, so that change is not what you gave us, right? Because the one that we have still says selectmen.
You should have both of them. You should have a draft that says code of conduct on it. And you should have the second one behind it, which says selectmen's meeting adopted January 22.
Too much papers here.
I know, I'm sorry about that. I don't like to try to give you a lot of paper.
That's all right. Okay, so it's my intent was this, is, you know, in lieu of what has happened in the past, and one thing that Tom had brought up the last time that we talked about this, is that the last time that this was reviewed was back in 2007. I just thought it would be a good idea for us to review it and think if there's anything that we need to add. My initial comment was there might be something here on how we conduct business outside of meetings, but I don't know if that's really the right thing to do. But I just kind of wanted the board to look at it and see what their thoughts are, and hopefully, we can either make some changes to this and get it ready for the next board. I know we only have one more meeting left, but just kind of wanted to hear some thoughts from the board. Some of the research I've done, I did a little bit of research on this. It's pretty much on par with what you see out there. But there are some that get extensively deep into code of conduct, but I don't think we want to do that for a small town of Arundel, but certainly open to suggestions.
Well, I would suggest if you had an issue, then maybe it was something that brought up, but when I review the code of conduct, it seems pretty pretty straightforward. I mean, you all have obligations as public servants to abide by certain standards. And to this date, I haven't, what, the eight years that I've been here, I don't think you guys have deviated from any standard that would be objectionable.
No, but we're not always gonna be here, and my only concern was, as I mentioned before, if somebody was to go rogue on the outside, there's nothing here that says anything about doing something on the outside. And again, this board would probably pull somebody aside and say, you know what? And peer pressure and public pressure or whatever, but in case somebody was to fight that, we've got nothing that really says.
Right, other than the charter and it talks about recall. And I can't remember specifically what the recall provision was within the charter, but we did spend a lot of time on that in the Charter Review Committee.
Yep. Yeah, and this board can't oust, you know, a select member on their own. It has to go, you know, it has to go through the recall, but I was just looking for some meat in case somebody went rogue. If the board feels that it's good as is, fair enough, we move on.
You certainly will have to take some action on it. I would suggest that we we table that until the new board is sitting in the new fiscal year, and we'll do all of the policies, code of conduct, and I'll make all the necessary changes from selectmen to select boards, so we catch all of them in the next process, hopefully.
Comments?
This may be a question for Tom. Mike, maybe a question for Tom, but it says be subject to censure by the board. How would we censure a member of the board?
You publicly identify what the behavior was that led to whatever conduct you find objectionable, lay it out there, and publicly admonish the board member and instruct the board member not to do that anymore. And that's kind of where the censure would come in. The next thing would be the recall, if in fact the censure is ignored.
Thank you. The recall would strictly come from, you know, not the board, but residents, folks, right?
Right.
So, I mean, I guess that I would ask everyone of this, you know, let's take a look at this and, um, you know, if you get any comments based on it, maybe we can bring it up at next meeting. Um, and then obviously we won't have it ready for the new board, but at least we can start working on it and get it in place. If you feel it's fine and good, I don't expect to get it done tonight for sure, but um, I just, I would just ask everyone to take a good look into this and, you know, see if there's some loopholes that we can maybe close in case something was awry.
Any, any other comments? Good, alright. So more to come on that. And the next item is personnel policy.
So the reason I, I asked Keith to put this on the agenda, I looked at it and I, I thought it was pretty good, but I just, you know, we've talked about retaining employees, uh, making sure that, you know, we do stop the, retain our employees. I know that we just, you know, we're, we're trying to do all we can from a, um, from a financial perspective. Um, but I just wanted to take a look at this to see if we can enhance the vacation schedules for our, our folks a little bit better, just, uh, as a, just a re- retainment idea, so. Kinda threw that out there. I mean, it does look pretty good, um, but maybe we can, maybe we can pull some of these in a little bit, you know, but. And the vacation for town manager, is that, is that separate? That, does that fall under a, a different, or is that, and that's not built into this, right?
I work at the pleasure of the board. So you can, yeah, I work at your, uh, the pleasure of the board, so. Uh, when I was hired, we, you gave me three weeks, even though I was new to, to the town, you provided three weeks to me as part of that provision, so, um, if you choose to add anymore, um, that would be up to the board to do that.
But that's not, that's not written anywhere, isn't any of our policy, right?
Contract.
Just our, just our contract with him, right? Alright. So that would, that could change based on the next town manager comes in or whatever, we can change it right now.
This town manager, in contractual terms.
Yep, yep. Yeah, so, that's, that's another piece of it, um, that we can talk, but I just wanted the board's thoughts on, on the current vacation schedule for the regular employees and, and what your thoughts are.
I don't know, for me, this seems like it's within the parameters of most businesses.
Yeah, it does, yeah. Yeah, the only thing that I was looking at, once I, once I looked at it and started reading, going through it, I'm like, it just looks pretty good. Um, but I was just thinking of maybe we could.
Well, seeing that I'm a shy person, you know, anytime you wanna add additional week to, to my vacation, I'd really appreciate it.
Slow down.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta amend the, the contract if he chose to do so.
Yep.
Yep.
I'd like to see the contract amended to, um, allow a town manager that can have one more week vacation on top of what he already has.
Yep, so let's, let's hold that thought for a second, Phil. I agree a hundred percent. I just wanna, let's make sure that we're okay with this. If we're okay with this one here and we don't wanna make any changes, then we can move on, but.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I have here, and I've gotta talk with, uh, the fire service because, because they work a different, they work different hours, so we compute their days of vacation a little bit different. They're not, they don't appear in the vacation schedule and the personnel policies as of yet. So we'll need, need to make some modifications there to, to take care of those folks. Um, they're not here for that, by the way. This is something I don't think they even knew was coming up, so, um, but i- it's a conversation I have to have with, uh, with the officers of the department, cause I've got some ideas and we are computing it in a certain way right now. Uh, but it's not etched in the vacation schedule, so I'm aware that we need to make those changes. Right, we'll need to make an amendment to the vacation schedule to cover the, the full-time fire personnel.
Okay. And then the other thing that we, the other piece of this is we've got the longevity schedule of after three years, they get seven cents an hour.
Right.
I think we should change that. I think we should up that a little bit more, but, you know, seven cents doesn't really amount to beans to me, but.
I, you know, I'm sure that when it was put in, it was put in here with all the good intentions, but, and continues to do so, but.
Well, yeah, but that was a long, right, that probably hasn't been amended in.
That section may never have been amended.
Right, right.
I never see a reference to amendment on the, on the policy, so I'm sure it hasn't been changed for a while.
Again, you know, I wanna make sure that we, I, I know that we, we've done okay with the salaries. We've been lucky, we've been able to do that, but I wanna make sure that, you know, people wanna stay here because, you know, we pay well, don't wanna overpay, but.
Alright, any thoughts, comments on this?
The only thing I'll speak on is just because I had the personal pleasure of getting yelled at when she would come home, um, is the, the equivalent years worked. I know it was a huge frustration within the office and not just with Emily, it was, it seemed to be amongst all the, all the employees. I don't know why there's confusion with zero to five years.
Yes.
Having to complete the fifth year versus.
Yeah, it says zero to less than five, so, yeah. There was always confusion with that. Uh, people thought that they, minute they hit that fifth year, they should be getting the additional pay. But you have to complete your five years, and so it starts on year six.
Right.
So it is confusing. Um, and you're right, a lot of employees have talked about it.
So is that something that needs to be cleared up?
Uh, for whatever reason, and it, it wasn't just one person, it seemed to be a group of people within the office that felt that was either mis- misconstrued or it should be changed. And I don't know if that's common.
So some thought that you, when you start your fifth year, or, and others.
I think that's how they felt, was, I'm starting my fifth year, I want whatever with my ten days.
Yeah, it would go to fifteen days, it'd be zero, they were thinking that once you started your fifth year, then you should be accumulating a vacation at the five additional days that you would get. So when they hit the end of five years, they would already have that fifteen. But we've interpreted, and this board has discussed it before.
Yeah.
That you have to complete the fifth year, so it actually starts on year six, that you start, and the issue was okay, we started on year six, but I don't get it until year seven, because, yeah, I'm accumulating it at the time. So that was the other issue that always came up. Could be clearer, um, some, some people understand it really easily, others don't.
I have a suggestion, then perhaps it could say zero plus slash to the end of year five, beginning of year six to the end of year twelve, so that you put right in there, beginning and end, so that would state it right in the paperwork.
Why aren't we doing just like five, ten, fifteen, twenty? Why does it go like five and then you have to work seven more years, then you have to work eight more years? Why isn't it just five, ten, fifteen, twenty?
I wouldn't, oh, oh, five, ten.
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty.
So you pull in two years for the fifteen days.
Right.
Right? And then, um, but then you gotta work ten more years to get twenty days, or actually you could throw fifteen.
Fifteen to twenty, yeah.
Right.
If you want, I can look at a couple, um, other policies that we can take a look at, but you know, this is, this is a prime example of when unions get involved and they come up with all kinds of different languages related to this stuff, so.
Okay, any other comments? No? Phil, I would entertain your motion.
Amend the town manager's contract to allow him one week extra vacation above what he already has.
Okay, got a motion by Phil to amend the town manager's, uh, vacation policy to add an additional year.
Additional week.
Ah, additional week.
Well, he got, he got really excited there for a second.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
Um, looking for a second.
Like go one more step and say forty hours or just one week's long?
Well, it's written, it, it, it's, it's in there now as weeks. The, the, his contract is three weeks.
Yeah, you know, I've got some concern that's not an agenda item, um, at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year, starting a new one, you know, right after our last meeting. If we're gonna do that, it seems to me we ought to have an agenda item, we ought to have the contract and for the next year, if we wanna give another week's vacation, that's when I think it's appropriately done.
Yeah, originally I thought this, this would fall under the vacation policy, but because we have a separate contract just for him.
Right.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah. So what we can do is, um, we can put it on, on the agenda item for the new board after the town meeting. And, uh, I'm sure the town manager won't forget it.
I make, I make a motion, we take all the excitement that Keith is just feeling and rip it away from him until the next select meeting.
We, we didn't get a second on it, so. Okay. So, um, the, the vacation policy, let's, you know, let's take a little peek at it. You, Keith, if you wanna just dig a little bit into that and um, we can bring it up again. Alright, next item is approval of, of payable warrant. Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. I do have a question. Are we ever gonna do anything with the Brimstone Road? I know that that intersection.
I, yeah, I hear you. I'll talk the territory again, see if we've got a contact, but I'm telling you, those folks are extremely, I guess we could cut the, you cut the poll down and see what they do then, but
Yeah.
I don't think we wanna do that.
Could we have the town attorney write them a letter, because this has not only been put off for what, three or four years, but every year that it gets put off, it costs us.
Yep.
That's reasonable.
Just mention that every year that it costs us more, oops, every year that it costs us more money, we're considering um, sending them a bill.
Hey, anybody got anything else?
Well, I had just one other thing. Seeing I've got the, the fire offices here, I wanted to, uh, I, I just wanted to, to say that, um, Deputy Chief Stevenson will not be at the, um, town meeting. He is on vacation. Um, so, we're gonna be meeting, um, this, this week and maybe next week with Deputy, uh, Chief, uh, Tardif and Captain, um, uh, Abily, and make sure that they're here, they're up to snuff, um, statistically on issues related to the fire service, so. Um, he told me this after he did a great dissertation of all the things that he wanted, and then all of a sudden, he's not gonna be here to defend them, so.
Did you explain to him that part of the role is to be president here during a town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. Did, did she know you took on this position?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but. Yeah, as long as we got it covered.
I'm sure we got capable hands in the department, that's for sure.
Yep.
Can I just touch on that a little bit? Um, I, I don't wanna deviate too much, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels on this, but, um, you know, we have a new budget coming up. Potentially a vote to put on an, an additional full-time personnel within the department. Possibly a new ambulance. I feel like there's a lot going on within the fire department in it. Would it be possible to put a deadline on like chiefs? I don't wanna say problems, but like if we don't, if we can't get a medical clearance by such and such a date, then, I mean, I feel like this department needs to progress, cause it's, it's, I mean, we got, we got some new stuff coming down the pipe, and I'm just afraid that if we don't enact a, a new chief here coming soon, if he's, you know, if this gets prolonged all next year too, then we've got additional personnel, we've got new apparatus, we've got additional equipment. I mean, can we just say like, we got a, we got a new fiscal budget coming up July one? Can we say, hey, look, Jerry, if we don't get a letter by June thirtieth, then can we make arrangements to maybe?
Well, you're certainly getting into personnel, uh, stuff, so uh, I'm gonna be reluctant to really respond to that in an open, in an open forum. Um, but I'm aware of those issues. I know they've been expressed to a variety of folks, including, including myself. Um, so, you know, I'm aware of it and, you know, we'll hopefully have a, um, determination by the end of the fiscal year, so we can move forward it. If I'm not certain, I think, um, all appointments end as of the end of fiscal year, so I'd have to reappoint folks for positions, so, uh, that's weighing heavily on my, on my decisions as well, but, um, I, I haven't had those discussions with, uh, Jerry. He's been, what, twelve, sixteen, seventeen weeks now? Um, w- without us, so, um, that's a little concerning, but.
And my, my concern, as I mentioned before, is just being down an individual, you know, we're coming into a busy time of the year and we're down an individual.
Well, you know. Well, I think the, the way the department is, is operating now is that the deputy chiefs do cover the shifts. They, not only do they cover shifts, they answer all calls. So, um, in, whatever happens in the new fiscal year with a, with a chief, uh, that will not change, so, um, uh, yeah, the, the chief position will be answering calls, and I think that was been expressed by the, the board several times to me.
Anybody else get any comments? Looking for a motion to adjourn at seven forty-eight. Motion by Jason.
Second.
Seconded by Velma. All those in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned.